Thank you for joining us this afternoon for the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Montessorino Community Center Committee Special Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few rules that says council members, commissioners, staff, and members of the public successfully participated in this meeting. Council members and commissioners, your microphones are live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you want to speak. For tonight's meeting, we're using Zoom to host the Community Center Committee Special Meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member or commissioner speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. And lastly, because we're not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting will be taken by roll.
Thank you. I will call the meeting of the the special meeting of the community Community Center Committee to order at five oh four P M. And if we could start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Seidler.
Here.
Public member Harrington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wolshammer.
Present.
And Mayor McGonigle.
Present.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to the consent calendar. And I believe that the minutes of the first of the January twelfth and the January twenty-fourth meeting were sent out. And was wondering if anyone has any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I will ask the members of the public to raise your virtual hand if you've got any comments on the minutes or on the consent calendar.
No hands raised.
I will close public comment on that, and I would be looking for a motion.
I move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
A second thought. We have a motion and a second may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner White.
Yes, approved.
Commissioner Seidler.
Yes.
Public member Harrington.
Yes, approved.
Vice Mayor Wolshammer.
Yes.
And Mayor McGonigle.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move to unfinished business. Item one is update on developments since the January twenty-four twenty-three meeting. So there's a number of things that are going on. One of which is we're putting together the draft plans so that we can get a bid package put together. And as you know, Gary Colsat and his team have been working on that. So we will start to be able to understand what this is going to cost from a ballpark perspective. And one of the things that we had done, we, the city of Monte Sereno had done was Silicon Valley Clean Energy had grants available in two thousand and twenty-two. And the city of Monte Sereno applied for one of those grants. And there was a total of one point two five billion dollars that was available in two thousand and twenty-two. So the city of Monte Sereno applied for a grant, and then we heard back just I I can't remember the exact date, somewhere around the twelfth of December, saying that unfortunately, City of Monte Sereno, you did not get a grant. But they said they're gonna try to get additional grant funding in two thousand and twenty-three. And at the Board of Directors meeting last week for Silicon Valley Clean Energy, this item was up to expand the the funding available in two thousand and twenty-three for grant applications that were submitted in two thousand and twenty-two that were rejected. And since the city of Monte Sereno had submitted an application, I had to recuse myself from that decision. And they approved an additional two point one million dollars last week. And I'm more than delighted to say that Silicon Valley Clean Energy awarded the city of Monte Sereno five hundred thousand dollars. Silence? I thought everyone would be.
That's excellent. We're all doing a thumbs up and.
Yeah, we're all trying to.
Excited faces.
On Zoom.
So let's just say that in the fall, I was thinking that if we could get fifty thousand dollars, that would be a great, you know, move forward amount. But to get five hundred thousand dollars has just it exceeded expectations like immensely. And after the, after that meeting last week, I had asked for a staff meeting on the Thursday. So the eight staff members were here. And I announced it that we got the funding. And since then, I think I've only disclosed it to one or two other people. And I wanted this committee to hear the great news. So you're the, I think, probably number twelve through sixteen people that have that have heard about this in our community. So that was, that was pretty amazing. That's what I wanted to give everyone the update on. So no actions required. We still have to, we made a number of promises in the grant application. But now we have to deliver on those to get the grant, but it's it's all good. So any, any questions for me on that?
No questions, just congratulations. Well done. Thank you, Brian, very much.
I I have a couple of questions. So you said that there's stipulations on the grant money. Is there, did they tell us how we have to spend the money?
No, in the grant application, which I can send to everyone, we explained how we were going to spend the money and what we would do as part of getting the grant. So that's what I'm saying our obligations are. So for example, it's, there's gonna be no natural gas going to into that building. It will be, we will promote it as it'll as electrification and energy efficiency. I mean, there's, there's nothing there that we wouldn't normally do. But there there were, there are features that are described in there where we say we will do this. So for example, we will have an induction cooktop. And that gives us the opportunity to do induction cooking classes, which we said we would do. We would, the building, as you know, is gonna be thirteen hundred and sixty-five square feet conditioned space. So it's gonna be like a midsize A D U, and we will allow people to see it, and we will show them our heat pump, water heater, and the electrification features of the building. But there's no, there's nothing quote draconian in there. It's just that we have said that we will be a regional showroom, almost if you will, for a energy efficient building and also water conservation features. And the, one of the next steps is to apply for grants from Valley Water, and I've had some preliminary conversations with them, and they're very excited about giving us a specific grant to help with our, with water conservation feature such as gray water, such as capturing the rainwater off the roof and having low having, having the landscaping be drug tolerant and of the native plants.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
That answers my question. Thank you so much for doing that and putting all this together. That's amazing.
Well, I will say that there were, all of this, all of the staff, three of the staff here in particular did a lot of, did contributed to the grant writing as well. Javed helped on that since he was on the board of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And we had assistance from Acatera up the peninsula. They had someone review it and put in some, some, some great edits. And Steve submitted it basically at the last minute in December, but we didn't get the, we didn't get the grant, but now we have it. I see someone has their hand raised. Go ahead, Avery.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is a public meeting, is it now safe to assume that this is public knowledge now that we can talk to anybody about this?
Yes and no. Because, because under item three of new business, what I'd like to do is have someone become a spokesperson at the city council meeting next week, which is Tuesday, the twenty-first. And I would like that person to make the public announcement to city council and everyone that's watching that meeting. I don't think there's very many people that are watching this one. Is that correct?
So we have color, and we have Mary Ellen and Vidya.
Right, so the, the people that are watching or that are attending this meeting are all of us that are on the commission. Plus, we've got our two members that are, we're gonna talk about next in item two. And we've got Sarah Shapen, who is from the town of Los Gatos or from Los Gatos. And she's attended several of our meetings already. So I would, this is a public meeting, anyone can say anything. But I would like our spokesperson to make the announcement and, you know, gather that surprise and in the, and the enthusiasm for going forward at the meeting next week. Does that answer your question, Avery?
You muted.
Yes, thank you.
Is that, is that okay with you?
Yes, but I I want to take myself off the table immediately as a spokesperson because I will be traveling. I will attend by Zoom. And I think it's more appropriate for somebody who's actually physically at the meeting to be the spokesperson.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about that under new business. Now, item number three. Or other questions or comments from anyone? No? Okay, so that's item one. And it is five sixteen. Now we'll go to item two, two applications received for consideration or appointment by city council for the February twenty-first meeting. Do we have a staff report on that?
So actually, once we had the appointing of public member Harrington, so we opened it up again to the public for anybody else that wanted to submit an application. And I received two emails, one from Mary and the other one from Vidya wanting their application still stay on consideration. Other than that, no one else submitted, so they will be presented, their applications will be presented at the council meeting of the twenty-first to be reviewed by the council members and all be specific to be able to consider and appoint at that point.
Okay, so it looks like we're gonna have two more members, which is absolutely fabulous. So I think that's really good. I'm sorry. I guess we have to open it up for public comment on item one and item two.
I think you did open it for one, and there were no hands raised at that point. But yeah, and.
In terms of the two applicants. So first of all, any comments from the committee on item two before we go to public comment? No? Okay, then I'll open it for public comment on item two. If anyone would, from the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand.
Vidya, I'd like to.
Okay, go ahead, Vidya.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the commission for, you know, considering expanding the com- commission to to include more members of the public, and I'm so happy to be applying for the same. So just expressing gratitude. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering. And I'd also like to thank Heather Harrington for for explaining, we need to expand it to more people, and I thought that was absolutely brilliant. So any other members of the public, would you like to speak? If so, please raise your virtual hand. I will know what hands raised. I will close, close public comment on item two. And then we'll go to new business, item number one, which is report on tour of Los Altos Community Center and its discussion only no action. And what I had learned was that Los Altos built a community center. And I watched the grand opening of that, the ribbon cutting from October twenty twenty-one on a YouTube video. And then I reached out to the mayor, who I know from other J P As, and said, I'd really like to see this. And she set up a tour for me and also put me in contact with the task force chairperson from several years ago. And I went out and and had a full tour of the facility. I was just the director and myself, and it's unbelievable. But if you take Monte Sereno and you say, we're gonna be thirteen hundred square feet, the Los Altos facility is twenty-four thousand, twenty-four and a half thousand square feet, so it's order of magnitude bigger. But what they've got in there, if you take a look at some of the rooms, they're very comparable to what we're looking at. And if you look at the furniture that they have and how they're set up for as a, as a multi-use facility, it's amazing, and it makes, it makes sense to to look at, at, you know, what they would have done differently and what really worked out well and where the value was and what their pro, well, the next step is what their programming is, what what they offer. But I would encourage each of the members of this committee to go and and take a look at Los Altos Community Center when you've got a few minutes, and I can give you the contact information so that Mary Jo could give you a tour. They're very proud of what they built, and it is used extensively. So I wanted to give you that as a, as a report. And in fact, today I met with the person that headed up the task force, and I asked her a number of questions. We spent several hours. And she was just a wealth of, of, of knowledge and what she would recommend we do to engage the community and to generate excitement and enthusiasm for moving ahead. So I wanted to give you that update. Are there any questions for me before I open it up to the public?
Hey, Brian, you, Mayor, you said that they're using it extensively. What kinds of things have they used it for so far?
Oh, so I can send you a brochure, but they, what they do is they have programs for their community that are ongoing so that the the center is used. I can't remember if they have eight or nine different rooms. But it's a completely new facility. And they will host public meetings there. For example, the the Cities Association of Santa Clara County, they meet there, which is the first time I was actually in the facility. They have two rooms that have a bi-folding door between the two that they have for a community, or sorry, for a seniors center that operates every day. And for those two rooms, they have patios. So if you think of of a room that with a, with a bi-folding door, but the bi-folding door is open, but each of those rooms go out onto a patio that would be almost identical to the size of our patio that is being proposed. You know, it's like you take a look at what they built and say, well, gee, let's, let's leverage what they built and what they did. So that is used. They have a parking lot with car chargers out there. It's not a showcase, but it's, it will be, it would qualify for lead platinum, or sorry, lead gold. In terms of programs, they have jazzercise classes, I think, five days a week or four days a week or multiple five days a week. They have after-school programs for, for teens that are there. They've just got all kinds of activities, and they've got some drop-in rooms that that are used and are fully booked all the time. And I, in fact, couldn't look at those two smaller rooms because they're, they're always booked, and they were, they were not available for me to look at. So that gives you a kind of a flavor, but I can get you more information on that, on what their programming is.
Yeah, that's very interesting. Thank you.
Other questions? No? With that, we have to open it up for public comments. If you're a member of the public, please raise your virtual hand.
Yeah, Mary Ellen.
We've got someone? Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. If, rather than going as individuals, perhaps it would be easier on them if those of us who might be interested in seeing what this is all about, if we went as a group.
That's a great idea. I can facilitate coordinating that. So long as we don't have a, a quorum that are there, then you can certainly go and attend. So that's, that's a great idea. I'll, I'll try to set that up.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other comments, Mary?
No, that was just it. I, I think that seeing what they're doing and, did they mention to you by any chance something they would have done differently from what they actually built out?
Yes, there were a number of tweaks. I'll, I'll say it tweaks as to what they would do differently, but for example, they didn't anticipate having, for lack of a better term, cruiser tables, the higher high-top tables where, where two or four people could kind of talk. So they didn't have those, and they bought them after the fact, you know, kind of a minor thing. There were, they said that in one of their rooms, it's the apricot room, that they would have had a bigger screen in there, and they didn't have a screen there initially. They said that they're the, having the ability to have screens available and people projecting onto them is, is a must-have, not a nice-to-have. They really liked the idea, they, Mary Jo really liked the idea of our, I, ability to have a cooking class in there, and they don't have that. And she's like, that would be, you know, I think she said, why didn't we think of that sort of thing? But that gives you a little flavor of, of what they would do differently. They also made some changes to their furniture. So for example, in some of the rooms, they had the chairs were all the same, and they had carpet. And in those rooms, they could have their chairs as purchased. But in the rooms that had the hard surface, they had to retrofit them with, with wheels. Again, small thing, but a lesson learned. And then they had two types of folding tables. They had square tables and rectangular tables, and they said this, anytime if you want to play a game or something, you need a square table. But for others, you need a rectangular one. I mean, there's just small, small items, but it, it really made a difference.
What, if I'm still on, what kind of storage do they have? Or do they even need to store tables and chairs? Because we do.
Their storage was designed for their for their tables and their stacking chairs. They, when I first, when, when Gary first and Jackie talked about storage, I was kind of thinking, gee, I don't know if that's such a good use of space, but it is absolutely critical. She said to have a multi-function room, you have to be able to move things around, but the chairs should be stackable, and they bought those that would, and then the room was built for what they purchased from, from the stacking side for both the stacking tables and the stacking chairs. The tables actually are tilting tables.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll set up a meeting, and it's just amazing, you know, the, the ideas that they have there that we need to incorporate. Any other questions from the public? No? I will close public comment. And we'll move and I guess we'll move to the next item, which is item two, soliciting community support for contributions to the community center. And for this, no action required, but I'll just describe what I'd like the committee to consider. We don't have to, to take a decision now, but I, I think that it's very important to create enthusiasm and support and energy for, for what we're gonna do going ahead, what we're gonna build. And previously, when the post office renovation occurred, I believe it was nineteen ninety-two, there were a hundred and twelve. there were a hundred and twelve people from the city of Monte Sereno. There were line items and I can show you the, the plaque that was created. It wasn't a plaque, it was more of a picture frame. But there were a hundred and twelve rows in there and of those hundred and twelve, sometimes it was a single person and other times it was a mister and misses. So there were at least, I think, two hundred, there were almost two hundred names on that. And what I think would be very helpful is to show our community support is to have a plaque and uh, have people donate money. And because we're not a five oh one C three, but we're a one seventy point one, so you'd get a deduction for this. Uh, a tax deduction. That if people contributed money, then they would have their name on a plaque. And I know some people prefer bricks or whatever, but the concept is that it would be nice to show explicitly the community support that we have. And uh, I would prefer to see, you know, if your choice is one person donating a thousand dollars or ten people donating a hundred dollars, I would prefer to see ten people donating a hundred dollars because it would show the support inside the community. Um, but these are, are just kind of ideas and concepts, but I think we need to we need to sharpen it up and, and move forward. But I wanted to introduce that item to the committee so that everyone could start to think about that. Questions, comments from the committee? If so, just speak or versus raise your hand. No comments. We're getting pretty close to five thirty-five. I'll open it up for the public, for public comments. If you have any comments on this, please raise your virtual hand.
No, who raised?
No hands raised. I will close public comment on that. And then we will move to, any other comments on item two? No? Then we'll move to item three, which is report on commu- community center committee progress at the February twenty-first city council meeting. And what I think would be very valuable is if someone from this committee presents and just gives an update to city council and lets them know about the grant. Uh, and uh, Gary Colsat has some images. It would be no action required, but it's the, it's the start of what I think should be um, communications and, and messaging and, and generating enthusiasm for this as we move forward. And it doesn't have to be the same person that is presenting all the time, but I, uh, we, it would be helpful to have someone next week on Tuesday. And I can work with that person and make sure that they've got um, materials and, you know, whatever he or she feels comfortable with. So um, I would like to and come away from this meeting with someone agreeing to do that. Do we have any questions?
I'm unfortunately traveling too. I'm, I'm hoping to call in for um, the actual meeting, but I don't know if the plane will have arrived, so we'll see.
Okay, so you're not available, Allison? So Avert said that he couldn't be available, so that's either Steve or Heather. Would either of you be available?
So I, that is, uh, that's winter break week for the local schools, Mayor. Um, and many people will be gone that week. Um, hopefully including myself, uh, but that also means that my daughter's high school CCS team lost uh, in soccer. Um, if not, they will be playing that evening. So I am not going to be available that Tuesday evening in either instance.
Okay.
I guess that leaves me.
Hi, Heather.
I have no kids in school anymore, so um, I could.
I'm sorry, did you say that you could do it, Heather?
I did.
Thank you.
I learned once you have the stale, sales stop selling. So we've got someone to do, to be the spokesperson on Tuesday. Absolutely delighted for that. And I know that at that meeting on Tuesday, we're gonna appoint two new people uh, that will be on the committee. And unfortunately, you know, it's just premature at this point in time to have them speak. But uh, I would like to now open it up for public comment uh, on this item. If any member of the public would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised. So with that, um, identifying a point, a spokesperson.
Well, I think at this point, as long as we have an agreement with everybody, if everybody, you know, I get a thumbs up or a yes on everybody, I think no motion needs to be.
Oh, I see Avert has raised his virtual hand. Go ahead, Avert.
And my real hand also. Um, I think it's actually great if it's somebody who's not on the city council, who does the reporting out. So in other words, not you or me, Brian. So it's, it's, it's great and very appropriate that Heather would do this. So thank you, Heather.
Well, thank you very much, Heather. Uh, with that, um, it's five thirty-nine. Is there anything else that we need to cover in this short meeting today?
And then just for the record, everybody did not yes for Heather, right, as your spokesperson?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great.
Uh, with that, I think we can adjourn the meeting and stop the recording. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate that.